So, we call a joint meeting of the Select Board and Planning Commission for Monday, April 29th to order. Uh, we did not warn the pledge of allegiance, but I might ask for one anyway if you'd all join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you all for coming. So, do we know when the last joint planning commission select board meeting was?
I don't know.
I remember 1984.
1984.
You said it was one?
Yeah, maybe three years ago.
Yeah, I think it has been the last five years, four to five years.
Wow.
Just one.
We, uh, we regularly find both of our boards working independently of one another, wondering where the other is on a certain subject. So, we're here tonight to update one another and to outline some priorities for the coming year and see how we might work together jointly to those ends. Uh, so with that, we turn the floor over to Planning Commission Chair.
Can I just, I'd love to just go around the room and, I mean, we all have many things to just introduce.
Okay, yeah, it's fine. So, Ned.
Ned Connell, Director of Administration here.
Jessica Frost. Did I say anything else?
Maybe just really select word planning.
Oh, so, yeah.
There we go.
Hi, I'm Jack Pickle. I'm the clerk of the Planning Commission in Towne, St. Albans. I've got a position here.
Do you get a coffee?
That's right.
Grant Henderson, Chair of the Planning Commission.
Brendan Esau, Chair of the Select Board.
Casey Too, Planning Commission.
Brian Brigham, Plan Commission D I B.
Albo Jal, Sales and the Strike Board.
Aaron Creely, Planning Commission.
Carrie Johnson, Town Manager.
AJ Johnson, Staff.
Beautiful. Thank you. So, we're gonna turn the floor over to PC Chair Grant Henderson for an update on the Planning Commission's work.
Okay. So, um, I'm looking at our agenda. It sounds like we wanna have discussion of, we wanna have discussion of capital and stormwater at the same time, but I tell a little bit what we've been doing on it and we can, yep. Okay. So, um, I guess Planning Commission, uh, I'll give a quick recap over maybe the last six months or so what we've been doing. We came out of a town plan, uh, that I think we finished and you guys, um, adopted in August. And then, uh, there was a quick round of a bylaw revision. And then, after that, I believe we started in on stormwater. Got that to a point where it may be an ordinance or a policy or something along those lines. Took a quick break from that, started talking a little bit more about sidewalks again. To the point where, uh, I think we did some report reprioritization based on some work that was being done or that will be done, um, at the north end of town that wasn't, it's not that it wasn't part of the plan, it just wasn't prioritized quite the way that we've been doing that work. So, we adjusted the plan and take account of that prioritization. And then, we've come back to stormwater and I think the last couple of weeks, we've been talking a little bit about capital. What we typically do with capital and, um, maybe, maybe this will change a little bit is we take a look at the capital plan and we see how it aligns with the town plan. Usually the bylaws don't play into that very much, but, uh, you know, the town plan, the sidewalk plan, any stormwater work they were doing. And we just went down through it to make sure that the capital supports those objectives. And when it does, we recommend that the capital plan that we seen, um, you know, be, uh, we recommend that to you guys. So, we did that at the last meeting. Um, I can't remember if we came away with a formal recommendation.
We did not.
We did not, right? Because I, because I think in anticipation of this meeting that we'd be able to discuss it jointly. Although we did go down through it and we spent quite a lot of time on prioritizing sidewalks again. I think we made the recommendation, at least internally, to split out some of the projects on state roads versus the ones within town and try to manage those separately.
May I just, let, our, our capital planning effort today is mainly dealing with infrastructure rather than equipment or buildings or anything else. So, we've been really dealing with things that would involve moving dirt at some point in the future.
Yeah. And, I don't know, I kinda see the role of the Planning Commission as being continuing that. If it's equipment, um, or buildings or that sort, those sorts of projects. You know, just knowing that they're happening is good. Uh, but I think that we need to be managing more of the infrastructure especially.
And we're about to start managing the, uh, equipment also in the buildings. That's our next stage in the capital programming effort. We're gonna update what's, we already have, adding on another year or so and run forward, also meeting with department heads that do have equipment that's gonna be mainly fire and DPW.
Do we have any target dates assigned for reports from different directors of different departments or?
We haven't even spoken to them yet. Um, I'm assuming that we'll have stuff back from them. We'll have done some due diligence on our end and we'll have input to the select board when they start their budgeting process, say mid to late summer, something like that.
Now, do you want, do we wanna see this include the fire department?
It does include the fire department.
Okay. So, we want, you're gonna go through every department in town, look at equipment, see what the needs are in the future, capital plan for it, along with other special projects.
Yeah, along with funds, programming out some of the funds and things like that. Both DPW and fire, because we have professional staff involved with them, are pretty well programmed out. They know the age and the lifespan of all their equipment. So, it's gonna be a relatively straightforward process and really adding on maybe some of few new things as the town is sort of growing in the future.
Personally, I took, I looked at Al and Jessica to tell me how they feel as select board members about this. But I'd like to see the Planning Commission review the local option tax revenues and see how we might get a best bang for our buck on a yearly basis and see that that money is budgeted and maybe even present that to the voters for approval at some point. Receiving $750,000 to $850,000 a year and just throwing it into a slush fund for different projects that we'll bring to voters at a different date, just doesn't seem like, I mean, we could, we could take certain set percentages every year and have them pre-programmed for certain types of projects and have that system approved by voters. That way, every time we need to put a shovel in the ground, we aren't constantly returning, you know. I mean, when we talk about capital planning, I'd love to see it get that in depth. I don't know how you feel about that, but.
So, we can do that. Um, probably the, the way, the best way for us to do it is, um, as we, as we do our individual planning projects, um, do think about the funding at that time. I don't know if that would be a separate, so, you know, just figuring out what to do is about a meeting for us, right? So, if we wanted to have a follow-on meeting every time, it'd be, okay, we know what we wanna do. Now, where does the money come from to pay for it? And, you know, as long as we can know what's already budgeted, what funds are available, and we can try to keep an allocation of anything that's additional to make sure that we're gonna be balanced at the end of the year.
Well, I, I also think that in many towns, I think the plan for this meeting is to have sort of an annual capital planning, capital programming series of meetings at the Planning Commission level just so we start with stuff now and build upon it each, you know, year by year by year. So, we have a
Sure.
ten, twenty years' worth of stuff behind us to show what we've been doing, how things are programmed out. But also to think about, okay, we can put that here, it's better to pay for that than finance this or to bond for that.
Yep.
To go along.
So, I think we started on that, um, sort of the overall, you know, what does it look like last month? I think that we can try to get that to a good place based on what we think we know. And then, maybe use that as the, uh, the foundation. We can update it, uh, in, almost in real time. So, as we, as we plan, we can, every time that we plan something, we can go back to that and say, does this still make sense?
Right.
Right? Similar to what we did with sidewalks where when things started changing with the planning on sidewalks, we went back and looked at what we had and we made sure that what we had still made sense relative to what was actually happening.
Right.
So, I think we can do that. And then, I don't know if, uh, quarterly, because depending on how frequently this stuff happens, um, I have a feeling it'll move a little bit slower than would justify like monthly updates to you guys. But I'm thinking, I'm thinking like a quarterly report back would make sense. You know, just assume that everything is going to whatever the financial plan was. And then, probably nine times out of 10, it'll be, yep, what we're doing now matches up with that.
Well, occasionally we'll get a point where we've capital planned for a piece of equipment or something and there's a change and, you know, we have to go on the fly and that's fine. We've been doing that a lot the last couple of years.
But we're not totally doing it on the fly. I mean, this is the capital improvement program. That's a five-year plan and that's what the Planning Commission is gonna work on. So, we have these parameters that we work within and yes, we move them around a little bit, but this plan should be our guidance, a guidance, a guidance document. It's not, not set in stone, but it's something that, and we identify funding. We identify the help, you know, the financial help of the town and.
So, has the Planning Commission ever had that under our purview previously?
No, not recently.
Was, was it ever? I mean, was it, did we have it at one point and then it goes back to the select board, moving back to us or?
Um, I think in the past, it's been a mixed bag of who took care of it, depending on what staff was available.
Okay.
So, I can't, I can't say never.
Okay.
But it's generally a planning document. Um, and we're hoping, we're trying to get everything back in line to where it works better to have your help. You've got a really good active board right now that'll help advise the select board, so.
Okay.
But that's a good point. It hasn't been done in the recent, recent past.
Okay. So, we'll take it on at least, say, let's take it on for a year to start. We'll see what it looks like after.
So, so my understanding of this is you are going to help us get this capital program approved and it's a five-year plan?
Yep.
So, then every year thereafter, we're gonna have other conversation. Well, not this one per se, but the short-term and long-term goals of the town will then be updated. All of our projects will be updated. This plan is equipment. So, in other words, when you buy a big fire truck.
Yeah.
Other plan we're talking about is renovating town hall, bike and ped facilities and infrastructure.
Right.
Those things are the things that we'll probably have to meet regularly to set some goals and try to get them done. The equipment is a different program.
Okay. So, that's a little bit, I was thinking about this.
Okay.
This, okay, so this is more like what we do when we do, uh, say, a town plan or a sidewalk plan or a stormwater plan. Where it's, it takes a little while to put together and at the end of the day, you have something that is not quite a living document, right? It's supposed to be, does it, does it get approved the same way one of those plans does and then?
Um, it, it does get approved. The select board then will accept it. Um, and then the department heads and myself use it as a guidance document.
Okay.
I don't know exactly what you call it, but it is a planning tool to say to the fire chief, all right, in the next five years, I was planning on replacing the utility truck and one tanker.
Okay.
And then, they use those goalposts to, uh, build their budget as a year.
You could even have one meeting just with.
But the iterative approach I was talking about before won't work.
Well, no, you're talking, we're talking.
You need, you need a very focused approach over a few meetings to get something in place.
Sure, a year, the better part of this year.
Right. It's not something that you get 90% done and then fill this.
Well, you'll need a meeting, you'll need a meeting with Alan, you'll need a meeting with the fire chief.
Yep.
I think we, I mean, policing services is something that's not up in the air, but it's something that's bid. So, it's not really under our purview, but.
Wait, wait, it is. The car, remember?
Well, that's what I was leading towards. We've got, in our current contract, you know, we will pay for a cruiser. And let's say this year, our contract for police services, the, the net, um, cost of the town went up $50,000 because this year, we were to pay for a cruiser. So, when it came down to do our budget, we had a $50,000 rise that could have been worked over the life of this three to five-year contract. Maybe, you know, we've got a police advisory board and if the Planning Commission's gonna get involved with capital planning, maybe it's worth that when we do get to the point in the next year to two years of renegotiating and maybe bidding our police services, that you look at the different equipment that it takes to police the town, you know, how we would be charged for it, how we should pay for it and what your recommendation would be there. Because it's difficult to be in our shoes and have to have a budget where you've got, you know, tens of thousands of dollars fluctuating, not in the basis of the service cost, but just in equipment.
Correct.
Whereas, I, I prefer to see it. I don't know how that works with the city. I know you can roll money over year to year, uh, for a Department of Public Works. I don't know if you can do the same thing with the police department. I don't, maybe it is that they can't be paid.
I don't believe so.
Maybe we could set up a police equipment reserve account and pay for it that way. That way, we're collecting the money over.
I don't think we need to decide that tonight though, because it is another, it is another aspect they can consider, but.
But anyway, so we'll, we'll work on getting that five-year capital program for equipment updated this year. And then, the other part that you're gonna start looking at pretty closely is, uh, the cost benefit analysis of the stormwater utility.
Yes, and that, I think it will tie in if we're doing the, the capital, uh, program also. The stormwater utility, uh, you know, so I believe we presented a, a plan for stormwater that essentially mirrors the state's requirements, right? So, um, you know, like I was saying, we tend to focus on what to do, uh, as opposed to how to do it. In this case, what to do was pretty much given this. And so, if we wanna go into the how to do it, part of it, um, some op, there are some options out there. The one that's been proposed, I think, is the, is the utility. And, um, we can, we can figure out the pros and cons of doing it as a utility as opposed to, say, a, a general fund. Some, I'm trying to ensure that sort of thing.
I think before we even get to that point of deciding on the utility, we really need to analyze the cost benefit of, which, you know, how many, we have about $5 million or so worth of projects to do in the next 16 years or so. That's that 20-year lifespan, though we've had a couple of years and we haven't moved forward that quick, that quickly. But we need to figure out what's the best option. Is it better, you know, is the combination of general fund and a utility or is it just a straight utility? And what's the sort of staff, the number of FDEs we need and how are we gonna do this? And sort of on a global sense, that the plan that Grant was talking about is sort of a, a fully, not a fully flush, but a, a good outline of an ordinance slash utility. But we really need to understand the finances part of it before we sort of jump in feet first. Because the finances, i- if we jump in feet first without the correct finances, then we're sort of, we're, we're sort of doomed to put in general funds.
We kind of, we had programmed money, I don't know if it was just more or less to show the state that we were serious about stormwater when we were writing grant applications. But we put in $150,000 a year that the select board, the previous select board, which my, Al and I were both members, we knocked that down to what, $30,000 or $50,000? $30,000, I think it was.
It was, I think.
From 120 and I think we left the consultant fees alone. Because we were, we were budgeting $150,000 a year and not spending in the realm of anywhere close to that.
Correct.
So, I think now is a good time. It's, it's more or less backed out of the general fund. Now is the time to analyze what the cost benefits are. And then, if it turns out that you can get an answer from a qualified consultant with some good data and that you accept the fact that it is a, a cost benefit to the taxpayers to do a utility and you flesh out exactly what that looks like, you know, we, I think the city used a ballot article to enact their utility, you know?
I'm not gonna guess on that right now.
But, well, we could take the appropriate steps to have it in place as soon as possible, given the fact that we backed that money out and we're no longer continually collecting that large amount.
And we have consultant money in there to help, help them.
Right. No, we kept that in, so we could do this.
Absolutely.
Because the thought was, we were sitting right here and I remember, you know, Stan Dukas who couldn't be here tonight and I looked at each other and said, we're not spending what we are budgeting. And that in itself is a little unfair to our taxpayers, but let's leave the consultant money here. And this year, have some group, which has been identified as the Planning Commission, research where we go from here and then we'll put the appropriate amount of money back in to either a utility or the general fund and then go from there. So, that's where we're at.
Okay. So, I'm gonna propose that, um, we start with the stormwater utility. Whatever needs to get done as pre-work to get that cost benefit analysis moving. Once that is in progress, circle back to capital to start on that plan. And then, whenever the stormwater utility is at a point, has a point where we can make progress on it, we'll then return to it, um, from the, from the cap, from, from the capital. It may be that we're far enough along with capital that I could have a couple of meetings, we'll get it over the end line and in which case, we'll probably just finish it. But, uh, I think we, I think we kinda have to go in that order because both of these feel relatively urgent.
Well, you're gonna get to the point, the timeline you just ran out and laid out sounds perfect because you're gonna get a consultant started and they're gonna have some dead time. And then, you'll fill out the capital planning and then go back. So, that's perfect.
Correct.
Well, I don't think you need, you have capital planning as one distinct issue and you have pro, former operational planning, which is totally separate. That tells you how much staff you're gonna need.
Will those be part of the same document or are those two separate documents, Carrie?
I, I understand what you're talking about.
Because you're going to, uh, if you're gonna put in a utility, both costs are combined in terms of taxes.
So, maybe I'm misunderstanding. So, we have capital funding, we have operational, right? You're asking us to do capital?
We're asking you to update the capital improvement program, which is a five-year plan
Right.
that does involve funding from the general fund.
Right.
But we're not, we don't usually ask or.
We must get back to the funding terms. If you're going to now analyze a utility,
Yep.
is not the utility gonna be costs of your capital expenses less grants plus the people who manage it?
Right.
Sure.
For stormwater, for stormwater.
Yeah.
But not, so that's a brand-new department. This does not, you can do this separately and add to that after.
And we can amend the capital plan to include the needs of the stormwater utility if we were to create one.
I mean, in a perfect world, we could make those all come out at the same time. I just don't think we're gonna do that. And this plan expires, the current one, in 2020. So, at some point next year, we should probably update it. And I don't know if we'll be done with the stormwater consultant.
Well, I don't have my head around it yet, but I'm thinking the first, the first, for first audit, that will not include any capital for stormwater. And that would be a separate entity. While we figure out how the stormwater is getting paid for, if it turns out that the best way to do it is through the general fund, then maybe, I think we roll it into that. And if it turns out that the best ways to do it is a utility, then I think we have to keep it separate and let that utility be run as a completely separate entity.
I think you're right on.
That's correct. That's what I understand as well.
That's how it works, okay.
Yep. I mean, it's a fluid thing. I mean, we all, everyone in this room has the power to, I input, we can change the things. That, that is my understanding.
Okay. And, I mean, we can even leave, you know, placeholder for stormwater, you know, in there until we decide for sure to remove it or we can even do some preliminary planning on it if that would be helpful or useful. And we can, I think that can be a separate request or a separate meeting.
Right.
All right. Um, so, I think I know what we're doing with these two. Was there more that we need to go through?
I think we can, we're gonna work back to the sidewalk plan and define where we're at and where we wanna go and then define each other's roles when we get to that part of the agenda. But I'll provide the select board update, with the help of my two colleagues and the manager. We, um, this time last year was actually really neat. We sat down as a select board and identified our top few priorities for the town. The health path, I think, was number two or three. Number one was actually the DPW garage and the salt shed and relocating it. And having that set as the top priority for the town seemed to help staff in VTранz, more or less, who gave us a $376,000 grant for the salt shed. It helped push us in the direction we needed to go to get that done as fast as we did. I mean, that project, giving it from, you know, making it a priority to a concept, to a ballot item, to, you know, mobilization, maybe even at the end of this week to push, you know, to push shovels in the ground. That took a, you know, that was very helpful. So, we're gonna do that again later this meeting. The select board has loosely begun talking about town hall relocation. I think the consensus right now is to keep it at the select board level and maybe work without a subcommittee at this point. I think we need to take the previous infrastructure committee's work into account and look at where, you know, they had already spent a good amount of their time, see what opportunities are still available, um, basically hit a refresh button on the data that they had collected. You know, maybe add in some new possibilities. Nothing in particular right now is even close to being set in stone. We had a couple of, you know, we had an opportunity the last time around that may be off the table. That was pretty high ranking with the infrastructure committee. So, you know, my, I guess my big update with the town hall relocation is to ask everybody here, both in the audience at home, if they're at home watching and here in the meeting, is to, you know, don't be afraid to get creative with your suggestions for the town hall. At the end of the day, it's, you know, four main walls and a roof that hold a government operation. It doesn't need to be anything grandiose. We just need to, uh, we need to either move or renovate. There've been some, there's some old studies available on renovating this building that if the costs were updated, would probably scare a lot of people away from doing that. But that's something we could look at.
Wait, wait, wait. We've already looked at that. Let's not repeat history. It's done, over with. What we have to do now is move forward and find another place to put the town hall, hire an architect to design the darn thing and go to the public.
Well, maybe even, it could even be to the point where.
This building should be burned down. Let's not talk about using it again.
Okay. For the record.
For the record.
I wonder how Al feels about this.
I don't know, I'm asking. You know, we, uh, I'm saying it doesn't even have to be that we find a vacant parcel of land and start from scratch. I think it could be something outstanding that could come down. We could start over. We could take an older building and rehab it, you know, get creative. There's no one singular mytho, methodology for this approach. It is a real estate acquisition and building a building.
To that degree, that's where we need the public's help. What buildings are potentially available that could be converted.
Well, I would say, if you're one of the 20, 22 views that this will probably get on YouTube and you have something for sale that you'd like to, like a town to take a look at for a town hall, please do call the manager and forward any information you can. One thing that I'd like the Planning Commission and the board to get on the same page on is the, the process and the procedure that we'll put applicants through to get the town to produce the letters required for the preferred solar site designation. You know, we had that one three-acre, do you remember?
Uh, yeah, I know, I know you're talking about the source. Before we go off the town hall relocation though, is there a role for planning there? Um, and the reason I ask is if the site is not set, right? We might be, we might wanna think about, you know, the same way we were thinking about preferred solar product sites, preferred sites for a town hall that would fit within, you know, the property flows, that sort of thing.
Right. And in addition to that, if you could think out what, I know it's very hypothetical, but what the population might be in 50 to 100 years from now, because that's really, we have to design the building large enough to cope with an expanded population that needs service.
Well, theory of zoning that helps us with that, right? So.
We got some numbers and, and we did project about maybe 50 years out with the help of, um, that 2013 study. It's still on our website. So, they used zoning permit numbers just to strap them.
Well, maybe you, maybe the Planning Commission has a meeting or two and sets some prerequisites that it wants the select board to consider.
But in that process, I would really hope that you could look at our changing cultural environment. First of all, you have the climate change. You're just going to change the sea coast. So, you're gonna have migration. Secondly, our geographic location to Montreal, Port of Montreal, um, may have some advantages for us. Third, if we're gonna be successful, we have to import people. We're not producing quickly enough to fill the jobs that we have available. So, my feeling is that we need to just. So my feeling is that we need to design a city-town, I think you have to work with the city, where this becomes an attractive site for younger people. People with young families, people who are looking for spouses, what have you. But a dynamic place where people wanna come and work. Obviously, we've got the jobs now, but you have to think of what jobs we might in the future attract.
Sure. I mean, you're talking about right now, sort of how to promote the town as a whole. What I was asking about is if there's a role for the planning commission and state proposing a few, you know, areas, relatively small areas, but that might be a good fit for a town hall. You know, based on how either we're currently distributed or what might, what we might have in 500 years. It sounds like there is,
Right.
you know, we could, we could say, you know, along this stretch, along this stretch, might, might be preferred sites.
I mean, my hope is, my hope is that the select board, either in a special meeting or on a normal agenda, a regular meeting, take up the town hall discussion no later than our first meeting in June. I think that we need to begin talking about it and maybe develop the process that we would like to use to identify opportunities. I think we need to get moving on that. I, I think at the end of the day, we need to make a lot of these considerations that Al suggested. But the building in which we reside has been not adequate to what we need for a lot of years. And I think if we took the same approach that we took to the Department of Public Works relocation project, identified town hall as our number-one priority, and then Al worked on finding, I think, again, at the end of the day, it's a real estate acquisition. I mean, you're no different than, we're going to be acting no differently than a private company with a $5 million a year budget that has X number of employees and needs to find. Where do they want a headquarter? And we have a geographic area of already laid out for us. We have to consider our clientele, what that might look like in the future, where we need to be geographically to best serve them, how public transportation might play into that. If we, if the planning commission would like to sit down and say, you know, here are prerequisites that we'd like the select board to factor into the town hall relocation project, such as no less than X number of parking spaces to serve uh, public transportation with a GMTA bus running daily to Burlington or wherever. But sit down and, if you wanna get into, like, the aspects that will be important to making this town hall a real town center and a place that services a lot more people than just folks that are coming to either get a building permit or pay their taxes like we have now, because I think that's what we have, is a place for people to come get a building permit or pay taxes. Um, please do.
Okay.
Go ahead. Just know that it's my intent that we get moving and quickly, I would say. But then the next couple of months, I'd like to have some type of plan for the next three to six months on how we're going to evaluate different properties, how we're gonna look, what staff is tasked with what. Maybe some prerequisites for them to factor into their considerations when they're looking for different parcels. But we need to, I would hate for us to, you know, lose out on an opportunity to acquire something that would be good for the town because we aren't at the planning level that we'd like to be at in order to pull, pull the trigger on something. So I guess I'd like us to, you know, think out what we want, but not be afraid to get incredibly creative when it comes to actually making the move. Because I think in a lot of cases, you have private entities and public entities alike. They identify a priority, they plan around the priority, and then the actual thought of getting something done gets lost in the planning. And then you move on to the next priority with a new board the following year. And then five years from now, we're in the same room, in the same building. So that's, that's just my thinking, but. Yeah, I think if you wanted to have a meeting within the next one to two months and, you know, have an agenda item about a few, maybe you give us five stern recommendations for a new town hall. Like, we want these five things. We think it's important for these reasons. And then we read it, factor it in, we move on. And then you continue working on stormwater and capital planning and we run with the town hall. And then, you know, we touch base sometime again this time next year, and this is what we were able to accomplish. And hopefully, we wiped everything off the list, but, you know.
I feel like that's kind of a quick hit, maybe we can get down to the next agenda.
Some, some of the town hall planning work has already been done.
Okay.
But you certainly should review it. That report is not that long and it's pretty informative.
We looked, we looked at it maybe a year ago and circle back because I think it's like 10 minutes on the time for us to go with it.
Yeah.
Fair enough. So back to the, unless anybody has anything else with the town hall. And I think we should decide tonight as a group that this is a relocation project. I, I would like that to be a discussion if need be. If anybody feels otherwise, please make that known. But I think it's time for us to realize that, you know, buying the old bowling alley and turning it into parking and throwing an elevator shaft and then all the HVAC work, we would have substantially more capital tied up in that renovation and acquisition than we would if we were to just purchase land in another part of town and either start from scratch or take a, a building that's currently in use and turn it into what we need. You know, and I'll tug the heartstrings a little bit and say that, you know, my grandfather went to the first grade in the very room that we're in right now.
Did he?
Yeah. So, yeah, he did. He did. But, um, you know, there are a lot of people in town who have a lot of memories in this building. And, you know, I'm not quite ready to burn it down, but, um, I think that there is a life after the town hall for this building. And I think we can work together, kind of like we're gonna have to in the next few months, to begin discussing what we wanna do with the DPW garage that we have now and where we go from there with that site. I think a similar approach will be taken to this building after it's no longer a town hall or while our new town hall is under construction or renovation. I just know that it'll be one of the most unpopular things with certain people that the select board could do to relocate town government to a different area in town, but it's, all of the data that we've seen and all of the finances that go into renovating this building versus building somewhere else, it will, it doesn't just like whisper in our ear to move on, it screams at us, boldface. So that's the direction that we'll have to go. You agree?
Yeah. There's no question. You do, yes.
Okay. So we're gonna focus on moving and not renovating.
Move on.
Fair enough. Okay, so.
To that point, I think we probably wanna try to move to the next few topics because I think some people have to leave by date.
Yeah, let's get. Let's get the preferred solar site procedure. So basically, to become a preferred solar site, you need a letter from the planning commission chair, and stop me if I'm wrong at any point, Ned, hopefully. You need a letter from the planning commission chair, the select board, and regional planning. And you file those along with whatever other supporting documents and then.
With the utilities commission.
Right. And it opens you up to net metering and a couple of other different things that aren't afforded to preferred sites?
Yes.
Okay.
But on May 6th, 6th, the regional planning is coming in to give, to provide advice to the select board and to go over some things. So we may wanna, as Kerry said, continue onto infrastructure projects.
Okay.
I was, I was kinda hoping, just to let the planning commission know that we're hoping to talk about this that night and come to some consensus. Because it was a little confusing for the select board the last time when they realized what they were asking for. Not that it was bad, just it wasn't real clear why they came to both boards and we had different results.
So they didn't get why they.
Well, why they, the guy approached, the last developer approached the planning commission and the select board, and there were different results. He was asking the same thing. It wasn't clear.
We need a procedure.
What? Can I answer that question?
It was very clear we needed a procedure, but go ahead.
Needed a procedure, but he was trying to bypass the rules of the 45-day letter. He didn't wanna spend, as a capitalist, he didn't wanna spend the money to find out what the neighbors, why he's.
Sure.
Selected a site that he thought was gonna be a preferred, he was asking it to be a preferred site. But he failed to follow the 45-day letter rules, where you check all your neighbors and make sure that they're not, there's nobody that's gonna oppose it. One thing. Then with a couple of other things that he didn't do in terms of what he would have to do in the 45. He was hoping to play a game where he got your permission, our permission, then go to the, to the Regional Planning Commission and say, well, these two organizations in the town approved it. You're not gonna give us a letter? My feeling was they'd prevail at the public service board. The regional planning will prevail, the regional planning. Why do we want mud on our face? Let's try to combine that. Now subsequently, at the regional planning, they themselves, in their own, in the, their planning documents, have not clearly defined what is a preferred site also. So they're looking at that, but through their research, one of the Southern RPCs came up with criteria. Uh, I think there was some 13 different criteria, which I suggest that we would use when they develop it. And hopefully Catherine will bring it here, that we adopt that, those procedures so that we're inconsistent with them. And we don't mess around with anybody who wants to bypass the rules or we don't have him waste money if he can't qualify.
Okay. So I just, I did not get the impression that they were bypassing, but I understand what you're saying. And the way it was presented to us is the same way that Kerry's presented now, where they were looking for a procedure. I think we provided, I don't know if it was the same 13, but we provided some criteria that we would recommend to be criteria for a, for a preferred site. I have not seen that list typed up.
We have that, at least our list is only about seven, but I'd like to see what.
And I'd be curious to see how, how.
We have a consistent criteria from place to place in.
How it matches up. We have things that we thought they didn't or vice versa.
Correct.
So that makes sense.
Yeah. There's a second major issue, which I think you all need to be aware of. And that is, we have Sheffield High Gate Energy Integration, which is the distribution system for electricity that comes out of Canada and then the dams in Vermont. Is, the capacity in, at one site, it's somewhere near Sheffield, is not sufficient to carry any more electricity. So they're stopping any more local generations, solar panels, windmills and things like that, because they can't absorb it. They can't get it down to New York State or to southern New York. So we have a crisis, it seems to me. And, but if you approve and somebody puts in a solar panel, what happens is because they can't distribute the electricity, but they've got an agreement that they have to the net metering and all that jazz. Our rates actually go up to allow for, and it's solar power. So the public's, the public utility department now is looking at, let's hold everything back until we can figure out what's happening. And, but now the southern part of our town is outside that, we can get into the distribution system south of the, at Sheehaw Lockage. And somehow Green Mountain Power is able to absorb some electricity. My feeling is, and what the regional planning commission is gonna do is say, they're gonna make a criteria that you go to Green Mountain Power first and say, can you absorb X number of kilowatts? If you can't, don't bother investing any more money in this research. So I think we should say to people who wanna have, put solar panels up in a preferred site, get clearance from either VEC or Green Mountain Power, that they can buy that electricity.
We should also state for people in the audience that this is industrial solar panels, not your roof-mounted.
No, no, if it goes into your house and is using, and if you can, the other thing is if the town wanted to put in solar panels to electrify its town garage, that's fine. It's all within a local, the transmission, the distribution, the retail distribution lines or, yeah. Transmission lines, distributions, the long-distance transmissions, the local, I think, or vice versa. The, so you can use within your own district electricity. It just can't go outside your district. That's what Green Mountain Powers has a larger field. So I think we need a lot more clarification before we encourage more people to put in large solar fields.
How does this information get disseminated from, you said BEC is the northern, the northern distribution hub?
The problem is you, you.
Do we just keep approving projects and they just keep raising the rates? Is that what?
Yeah.
Okay.
But you have, the sad part of this is you have the federal government, the state government, and the New England Utility Commission, whatever it's called. All started with the federal government in Vermont, was with the electrication of Vermont back in the, early 1900s, I think, whatever it was. And those premises have not been examined in the 50 years since. So you have a lot of conflicting rules between Uncle Sam, the New England consortium, and then Vermont. Everybody says everybody else has gotta solve the problem. Well, it's everybody's gotta solve it. It's not one, one particular entity's problem. The public utility department is going, saying it's gonna cost a quarter of a billion dollars. Well, when I hear billion, I think really a huge amount of money. However, that's only $250 million. That's reasonable to me. That's feasible. And so their packaging is that they don't want to fix that grid line. And I say we have to. Not only for our benefits up in northern Vermont and Franklin County, but also for the long run for the environment. We need to have renewable electrons.
So was it pretty much the Wild West up here as far as projects were concerned?
Yes.
Until you, until these utilities or, so these public or diesel electric companies hit capacity, right?
Right.
And then now of us understanding, okay, so, okay, you may not wanna do too many more of these.
Right.
Weird, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Okay.
That's a shame.
Yes, it is. It's a real, because we, we have this mantra and try to be, you know, 90% renewable by 2050.
You just know you can't.
And here we've got a roadblock.
Yeah.
So let's, let's agree that we will touch base and then communicate between our designated staff on the outcome of our meeting with regional's guidance on May 6th.
It'll be, I think it'd be worthwhile if you all could come to that.
Right. I was just thinking that, or at least one, some.
Hmm. Somebody would have complained that we could communicate it back.
What I think, May 6th, Monday. Uh, yes, it is actually. I keep thinking it's far away, but it is next Monday. Um, or at least one person just to get a feel and vibe for the regional plans.
Yeah, okay.
Be 6:30.
So start.
Yes. Well, that'd be great. And then let's go to agenda item four, the town hall infrastructure project. The select board, the last couple of meetings, over and over again, with certain members have said, where are we at with the bike and ped plan?
Yes.
It's still the sidewalk plan, but now it's the bike and ped.
Well, yes, so the bike and pedestrian plan was accepted by the select board on May 7th.
Of 2018.
Of 2018. Yep. So, um, and one of the reasons, right?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you were looking at it. I thought it was last year, but.
Yes, yeah, no, no, I was watching somebody turn around outside for the.
Um, anyway, so, um, so we're, to me, this is the reason we need all, all of these boards together tonight. Because we have this plan, but we really need, need to take that tangible next step with where do we wanna go.
We need the policy area limits.
Where is this municipality? Where should we go? And a real thorough conversation about what's really important. And I know the planning commission has looked at it, some, select board has not, obviously, so.
Planning commission spends a lot of time on this subject.
You guys put a lot of sweat into this, and so we'd love to hear from you.
Going back to three years?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, so I, I don't even know, just to slide over that. So the planning commission worked on this quite a while.
Yeah.
Submitted the plan in the spring, the select board accepted, and now we wanna move it forward.
I can remember, you know, vividly, then Secretary Henderson, um, working with the tele, clerk? Clerk Henderson, he was a clerk.
First clerk.
Working with that television, helping to develop a weighted algorithm that would end up helping us prioritize different projects. Um, and that very grassroots effort, spearheaded entirely by the planning commission and its designated staff, resulted with this very comprehensive document that has in itself, was it 14, laid out and prioritized projects?
There's plenty of projects.
There's no shortage of projects.
Is it, is it fair to say that once these projects, we get into the capital plan? Is it, is it fair to say that once these projects, when we get into the capital plan that we're going to be working on over the next couple of months, then that's how they will actually get done? That's what will trigger their implementation?
It's fair, but I don't want to confuse the capital program, five years with, talking about equipment, with the larger infrastructure plan.
So is any part of that
We both use the word capital.
So is any part of the capital program that we're working with, infrastructure, with equipment, is any part of that also infrastructure or is that a completely separate?
It's usually separate.
Completely separate deal.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that.
Is the select board keeping the infrastructure piece of that or are they?
That's TBD, I think that
I don't know what that looks like, I guess.
I think depending on how well, and I think it won't be handled well, how well the planning commission handles this five-year equipment program. I think that could really not open the floodgates, but make the select board more amenable to delegating other financial planning tools to the planning commission.
Say that, you want us to do a good job, right?
Well, you have been doing a lot of work and you know what wasn't mentioned is you did also the impact fee update or helped us with that. So there's been a lot of good planning tools that we've just continued to build on. And I think it's worth mentioning that we did a survey in the last twelve months and one of the number one, the number one priority for taxpayers or the people filling out the survey was bike and pedestrian facilities. Very much supported these, so I feel like we're, we've been given the support to at least push forward and get two or three done, or one.
Well, actually, not to, not to take any time, but last week we had a special meeting of the select board at eight AM, much to Al's discontent and me. We were contacted by Tim Smith in his capacity as FCIDC Director about an opportunity to pitch in an amount to be no more than eighty-five hundred dollars to construct a hundred thirty-eight feet of sidewalk within the industrial park. To connect two longer pieces of sidewalk. Yeah, so we approve that and it's going to be built and the town will take it out of the, I don't know, capital project fund or whatever fund we designated. We're, we're moving to that end. We just spent a small amount of money, but the town is finally going to write a check to put a piece of sidewalk in the ground. I mean, that could, I say we use that as a Kickstarter. Let's identify the next project. I know that in meeting with Tim Smith in his capacity as mayor, he feels very strongly that our first joint project could be extending Congress Street sidewalk to Hardak and working out a maintenance plan on that and, you know, that I think is definitely going to come up with the select board meets with the, meets with the city councils on May thirteenth at seven PM in the Bliss Room at the St. Albans Museum. And I'm looking forward to bringing a copy of this approved plan and letting the mayor know that on May seventh of two thousand and eighteen, the select board at the time, identified its number one bike and ped oriented project being the Congress Street extension. I think it was, yeah, it's number one.
Well, it's definitely number one. I was just, you know, you have prioritization.
I think.
We have the, the table that's in the plan is, it's expressly written that it provides prioritization.
Why hasn't it been done?
Huh?
Why hasn't it been done?
Well, I guess that's the question. So what's, what, what are the steps? What are the steps to get one done?
Spend money.
There you go. So we come back, so we come back to capital, right?
Yeah, we make the world go round, right?
And that's kind of where I was, that's kind of where I was going. So what capital plan or project or, you know, what does it have to make it into? And is that something that we're doing?
I think it could be. I think we're deciding that.
It sounds like
I think that's, you know, we had done it informally and originally only with the select board and we, the select board decided we should have a spring planning meeting
Right.
with the planning commission and the select board together to set priorities so that we can then implement it and search for the money and get more details.
So we need a working, we need to know this.
Correct, right. And, and just to get a, we have a conceptual plan with these, with these sidewalks, right? We don't have construction plan. We don't know how much it's going to cost, but that's what we would do if you said, we want, we want you staff to work on two things. All right, well then we would have to find out, are there easement issues? Do we have budget for it? How much does it cost? Where is it going to go?
Now, is, is planning empowered to give that kind of direction? I feel like that's more of a select board.
It is mostly in the select board realm at this point because most of those things cost money.
Right, okay.
We have to spend a little bit of seed money in order to get a real budget, a good budget number for the fall. And that's what Brendan was kind of alluding to, that best case scenario, we identify things here, we get support for it, we talk about it a few times publicly. Then in the fall, we add it either to our budget or add it as a line item on town meeting day to say, you know, taxpayers, do you support this bike and pedestrian path on Congress Street? It's going to cost thirty thousand dollars, let's say. I don't know how much it's going to cost. That's way low, but.
Is there an amount of money where, where it is or is not a vote?
I think that's
There's an informal number of, what, five thousand? I mean, it's, it's really a relevant question. There's no
It depends on the subject, I mean.
So it's like a chosen amount?
There are different residents that set over time.
Okay.
I kind of, let's, I know we need to get a project done, feasible, you know, a feasible project identified, funded, approved and built. But I also think there's room, given how, because right now, to be honest, we have a planning commission that is stacked. It is the definition, the sports definition of a stacked team. You guys have five, five tool players. And we need to utilize your skills for the town as quickly as possible and
I'm going to pass this out. This is a list of the top five near town roads and the top five projects near, just what you're explaining.
While we have you, I'd almost like to see at some point, if, if you have time, that you take this list, identify ones that are reasonable. Because there are some that would just cost, like Fairfax Street's lower on the list because it would cost.
Yep.
Oh my God, I'd hate to even think of how much that would cost, but I
That's TBD, by the way.
Identify, it is, it is, yeah, I know, you've got, you've got them identified, you've got them planned. But tell us where you think that these costs and how much this should be broken down to an annual basis to get these things done at a reasonable rate, where you think it should come from? Because
It's going back to the financial plan.
Well, that's where I'm at. I'm thinking, we've got this money coming in every year that we've been throwing in the infrastructure fund. And we've been looking at it as a town's personal savings account for buildings. Basically, you know, we've tried to pass a project oriented around bike and ped that was not approved by the voters. But now we have a survey that shows they're that serious about wanting bike and ped infrastructure. We've got a plan in place that we didn't have when that, that ballot item was presented. I think we legitimately need to present the voters with, these are five years worth of projects, even if it's only two or three different actual physical built projects that we think we could get done for X amount of dollars and, you know, budget that out over how many years? And say, maybe the fir, if you say, let's throw a number at the wall, a hundred thousand dollars a year. We need over five years to build projects X, Y and Z. Maybe you say the first hundred thousand dollars infrastructure fund money coming in in the fiscal year gets allocated directly to sidewalks and then for these projects that have been approved by voters, because this plan, we would ident, we would turn it into a plan, would be approved by voters. And, you know, we take that money, we put it aside and then the staff would work to implement and build. Instead of every year, we pick a project, bike and ped oriented, we figure out the costs and the issuers, we present it, we build it the following year. It's a lot of, you could lump a few together and do them in one shot over a five-year plan is what I'm thinking. I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but.
Putting up the vote every single project seems a bit, it covers.
Especially when we have fourteen of them identified that we'd like to see built over the next twenty years.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see, where you take all the money we have to raise for capital improvement, your trucks and fire equipment and all that, what you want for sidewalks, what we need for stormwater, for buildings, and see what that sum total is. And then what priority, it would be priority, but when they can be built, what the cost would occur over the next five years. And then ask the public for, then take the sum of each year, add them together and then go to the public and say, we need X number of million dollars, which we will then pay for, you know, through bonding or through saving of the tax increment fund, what have you. But I think we have to move much more aggressively, like the city.
So does the city have a five-year budget that they, that they vote in?
No.
I mean, we vote on our budget every year.
They've been using, they've been using TIP funds to a large extent.
Sure, okay. But I mean, but I mean, that's, that's what we could come back to, right? Is we vote on our budget every year, we pass our budget hopefully every year. And what we're asking for now is a longer term
Permission.
Uh, either a longer term permission or at least a longer term plan.
Yep.
So that we understand what we're going to be asking for every year in a way that we, we at least believe that the voters will
I don't think do we add what we're going to spend each year.
Um, so.
I think you identify projects, you figure out a fair cost, work that into a five-year plan and then pass it in one shot and you've got the revenue coming in.
Right.
And I think you, for bike and ped money especially, since we have none of it programmed into the general fund. Unless we were to pull random money out of the Department of Public Works, which I see their director is shaking his head and
When you lob grenades like that, yeah.
Yeah, of course.
We're going to go, no, thank you.
So I think we need to look at the local option tax as a funding source.
Yeah.
Because you have a lot of folks that say, we want bike and ped, don't want our taxes to go up. I think a lot of us are in that boat right here. So I think we could use that as a vehicle, yeah.
Yeah, and I think having that designated funding would open us up for grants too. As we automatically say, we have this amount that we can manage to grant for the public town.
Every year. I mean, if you wanted to even, as part of your sidewalk discussion, identify a few projects that you think you could get done in the next five years and then use these cost projections and then give us a yearly number
Sure.
with some supporting documentation behind it.
Yep, okay, so I guess what I'm hearing is, you want the financial plan for sidewalks. So essentially an infrastructure plan with an extremely limited scope.
Yeah.
That is bike and ped only.
Yeah. Because it's such a new process for our town and our taxpayers to build a bike and ped.
So I, I think in order for us to do that, and this is probably going to be something we're going to need from you Ned, is a pretty good understanding, a crash course in the public finance for the town for the whole planning commission. So that we can make sure that, like, I don't, I don't want to come, I don't want to come in with this thing and have the bike and ped cost as much as everything else combined, right?
It's not going to be popular.
Exactly. You know, so, so we need to, we need to understand what the backdrop, the financial backdrop against what we're doing this.
It's just
I think if we do that, then I think we can give you sidewalk financial plan.
And it's going to be a reasonable number. And I don't have any particular number in my mind, but it's got to be something that's palatable and that works with everything else we want to do. So maybe it turns out that five years from now, we're left with a Fairfax street project of some kind and it's going to cost as much as, you know, three projects put together. So that's all we do over a five-year period and that's all we pass. But that's fine. At least, I just don't want to get to the point where we had a bike and pet or a pedestrian plan from two thousand and three that a lot of people put a lot of good time into and it sat on the wall and nothing happened with it. And I don't want this plan to turn into another two thousand and three sidewalk plan.
True.
And I think that us passing, you know, two, three projects at a time with a designated funding source and then not having to hear about it again for five years and just seeing this stuff get constructed and seeing it get used. Like, we built that path in Bay Park. And you could have a foot of snow on the ground and that thing is beaten by the end of the day. People are craving it. They're telling us they want it in surveys. And I think this is probably the best vehicle we have to give them what they, what they want. And if, if you use the local option tax as a revenue source, maybe even your sole revenue source, then it's off the back of the taxpayers collectively, because a lot of that local option tax fund revenue comes in from taxpayers from other towns that come here to shop. I mean, we are a commercial destination for Franklin County. I think that factors in, you know, we're, we're financing our long overdue bike and ped infrastructure with a somewhat other people's money. And we're not raising our tax rate in the process. I mean, I think that's fair to everyone, because there'll be a lot of people that aren't going to directly benefit from seeing a sidewalk put in any particular area. But if they're not seeing their taxes and their net contribution to the town go up because of it, I think it's a fair way all the way around. So if you wanted to look at that and you're agreeable and amenable to producing something,
Yep.
some kind of a recommendation to that end.
I think so. Two things to grant. First, I would look at this bed project, bicycle, pedestrian master, but over twenty years, I'm not too worried about getting it done.
That's what I have written down, is ten to twenty. I know Brendan said five.
Right. And within that, I think, even though in five years you may have A, B and C, D
Yeah.
plan, but then Uncle Sam or state government says, perhaps a grant, as Jessica's suggesting, for X, Z.
Well, that's what we ran, I mean, that's what we've already had to adjust to, right? Because I think that, you know, that, that North End project.
Right.
That certainly wasn't the highest on our list.
Right.
But there was grant money available for the planning at least. And so, you know, they got to take advantage of that, which is the right thing to do.
They'll open, that opens us up to federal funding.
Right.
I'm also wondering if we can keep it not specifically only for sidewalks? Because what if a grant comes available where you can do one of these trails?
A trail or something, yeah.
So to keep the scope broader.
Keep some flexibility.
Well, I think a lot of us are having in the back of our minds that the St. Albans Health Path that we've been kicking around the last couple of years could eventually, and I'll say eventually mean for the town, a connection safely from Route Seven to the complex with a pedestrian crossing near Old Thorpe Avenue. It could mean an extension of a path from the complex all the way to Hardak. A safe way to reasonably get recreationally from the complex to Hardak. Hardak is not that far from the rail trail. That could be a possibility at some point. So you could very reasonably park at BFA on a Saturday. You know, hop on your bicycle, take the new bike lane up to the new St. Albans Health Path, ride it to the complex to Hardak, get on the rail trail and come back. I mean, that type of infrastructure is something that would open up the town as a recreation destination where people would not only just want to come visit us for a weekend and then maybe get dinner at one of our fine local restaurants.
And pay the LOT to contribute more.
Literally, they're going to pay to create more. And then a few of them might actually stay. And then that lends into Al's point earlier, we're not producing enough workers. We're not growing our population fast enough to keep up with our, our workforce demands. We have more people leaving the workforce than we do entering it on average. I think Casey could say that that's a fact.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there's so much, bike and ped is so much looked at as just a nice thing to have. It's an economic driver, if you want to make it one. And I think we have every opportunity in the world to do that.
Just look how quickly Uncle Sam came up with a million dollars to fix the Colchester Causeway. It's such a major attraction for people from around the world to come through Burlington, over to Colchester, up that causeway, take the ferry into North Harrow. And surprising to me that this was the second time a million dollars has come in because of Mother Nature's prolific power.
Alright, so I got it. You want to plan it? That's worth a million bucks. Got it.
That's right.
Just get that done.
There.
Okay, so we have, the other part of the sidewalk piece is we need, we need a guidance document for zoning to follow. What side, and I think Brett could speak to this as the DRB chair, if you wanted to. Now, I sat down with the DRB six months ago, maybe, and just asked him, hey, is there anything you want the select board to know? And I probably should have just walked out and went home, because it turned into, we need some type of a guidance document to tell us, we want in this area, a sidewalk that looks like this on this side of the street. Or we want, you know, we need something to tell us exactly what the town will require and eliminate all this gray area. And we haven't produced that document yet.
No, what we needed to do in order, as Ned and I were talking about, this plan had to get approved and then
We needed ordinance.
There was something else in the interim that happened last fall, but anyway, there was an order of things and now we're at the point where we need to prove that.
Yeah, impact it happened then.
Oh, that was it.
If you study.
So we're, we're ready to
So you're ready to, Alex, so.
We're ready, pretty.
And I don't know that
So you guys get out your daytime jobs.
Yeah, right.
Well, being that it's an ordinance, I don't know that, I don't know that it I don't know that it has to be a planning commission issue. I think doesn't the select board get reasonably handled? I don't know.
Right.
For me, Carrie raises a very valid point. You are volunteers, we're all volunteers.
So we don't wanna overwhelm the answer.
So.
I think the issue is we need more staff. I really do, I mean, we can't, when you start looking at budgeting and all that, you can't take off lunchtime and try to figure out what it's gonna cost us for a square foot of cement.
Right.
We need somebody on staff that can do that research. I my personal opinion, unless you wanna, you spend your lunch hours doing this.
Well, I don't think it's a planning commission responsibility to estimate costs of.
I don't think I'm qualified, yeah. I don't think I'm qualified to do that.
Yeah.
Um, but the, to your point about the ordinance, my preference on the ordinance would be to have staff draft it. Planning, review it to make sure it aligns, which I fully expect it would. And then, you know, the, it can it can go to the slide, it's like, we can be our recommendation would be like with our blessing, I guess. We wouldn't, you know, uh, we we wouldn't block it, right?
Yeah.
Or whatever the case may be. I I think that's the way we're gonna handle the ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I like that.
So we're gonna move with the plan of Carrie, Ned, and draft a draft ordinance, the planning commission will review it.
As of right now, we have had a sidewalk requirement in our bylaws for years.
For years. Longer than that almost.
And we have not been able to say to an individual who want permanent project, what this sidewalk is gonna look like and what side of the road it's gonna be.
So why don't we amend that?
So we're constantly waiving this requirement. So so no one right now is obligated to put in any of this infrastructure.
I'd like to.
That we won't.
Let's also look at the idea that was kicked around at the planning commission level, maybe at the select board, but it would've been before my time as a board member. Of creating a capital account. That project developers or home builders or whoever could, you know, pay a certain fixed cost into in lieu of constructing their own sidewalk. So that the town at a later date could identify a project that would serve as that relative area. That would be more of an arterial function instead of a vein.
I thought we tried that.
I I don't think that it ever was fleshed out.
Yeah, we got to the end of it.
We never got to the end.
Whatever.
We kicked, we knocked it from like eighty dollars a foot down to thirty-five. And then that's the last I remember of it.
But let me, I just wanna make sure I get this right, we want an ordinance that designates.
Give them two options, build it or contribute X amount per foot.
Well.
Right, but 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 also on road or segment by road segment saying this side, that side, whichever side of the road it is.
And I think.
It would be best.
Yeah, we went, right, we went through that recently.
Right. Yeah, you did.
And I believe that.
But if a developer pays money into a kitty, he wants to see a sidewalk constructed in his project area, not on the other end of town.
Yes.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's gonna be in that area, that service area.
No, that's right.
And I think it should also be open in the ordinance for that developer or landowner or whoever. To make an agreement with a local landowner to make a sidewalk extension instead of constructing or contributing. I guess we'll point back to the Handy GMC scenario where we've got, you know, the Handy family saying. We will extend your sidewalk to Maple Fields and it will cost us the same money and you will get use.
So right now you're just actually muddying the waters around a financial plan for sidewalks.
And it didn't happen. Well.
Which we can do.
I don't know that that's necessarily.
But it's, but they're two fundamentally different, uh, modes of paying for that.
Maybe you, well, I thought, I think in the first five to ten years, it doesn't really.
They're not really, because I think what Brendan's talking about is public, public versus private donation, like.
But you'll throw the prioritization on its on its head.
No, I don't think so. I think the public, the public's prioritization will stay the same, public funding will be what we decide.
Not necessarily.
And what Brendan's talking about is the private side when somebody comes in and says, I wanna develop X.
This is another funding source.
So the commercial areas where we have.
We have to give them guidance.
Anything covered in our bylaws where you can just, that's that.
Right. That's right.
And then.
And you have to construct sidewalk.
Yeah, because we're not giving them guidance now.
Right.
So that's private, that's just about it.
So it's being waived.
And there wouldn't be any overlap between our prioritizing.
There is overlap, but.
There is overlap, we'll have to deal with it and and try to.
Well, it's another funding source. If a priority comes up that.
Right.
You know, is in a certain project area and that.
It's no different than if the state gave us a grant or something, we would prioritize it in order to get it done.
Yeah, it's alright.
In in timing with the funding, so.
Because this this plane you're gonna create is gonna be a guidance document for ten years or five years.
Yeah.
Provision.
Right. Right.
Right.
So I think it's.
Yes, sorry. Thank Carrie, don't, wouldn't be worthwhile again now to have Becky involved along with the regional planning commission. So we don't, they have a new district coordinator, I don't know where he stands on a lot of this. But the past one was the person who created so many of our problems where Handy had to put in a sidewalk going nowhere.
Becky has been working with that person and they're more flexible than the previous person.
Right. What I want is understanding, you understanding their rules, so we don't get into conflicts in the future.
The regional has seen this, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
They're more or less okay with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But they didn't, there's still dispute on the on the sidewalks, aren't they?
Uh, there's still a dispute, but I that I think really got back, gets back to the Act two fifty person who's talking about.
It's hyper talk wise, right?
And the new person is far more logical and amenable to some flexibility on where and how.
I know. Right. Just get it in writing.
Yeah, I.
So I don't wanna get sidetracked with like individual projects, I just wanna understand what we're doing.
Is that their policy that they can pay?
No, we talked about it and never implement, we haven't implemented anything. There's no guidance, all we have is.
Thirty-five dollars, I think that would be way underpriced, wouldn't it?
That was my opinion right from the start, but you totally wrong.
It's about half, half price, yeah.
That seems like a huge incentive for them not to build a sidewalk.
Fifty bucks?
You think it's fifty?
Fifty bucks.
Yeah.
Well, we come up with what that is.
I think it should be a lot closer to the actual.
To reality.
Well, half the time you get a lot of people in that can, that have some capacity to be able to do their own work, so the cost.
I mean, it depends whether you've got a nice flat piece of land, you don't need to bring in any fill or anything like that. Or, you know, you gotta fill gullies, put ink over it.
Some people will make out, some people will build their own sidewalk because it will be cheaper than our fee. And I don't think we're at the point where thirty-five or fifty is a, we haven't designated a number, but I think we should get there. And I think Alan could help with that in helping come up with what some street numbers could be for different sidewalk projects. Um, or maybe.
We were told by an engineer that our number fifty was way out of line and.
Well, we were willing to accept that because it afforded the town some flexibility and where to build. So if we're removing that flexibility, then absolutely makes sense to bring the number back up.
That was part of the rationale for going from fifty down to thirty-five is it encouraged them to contribute the money rather than constructing it.
Right.
Which gets back to Aaron's thing where we could take the the money and do it, do the, you know, two or three blocks worth of sidewalk down one end of a street. This development might be down up here, but we only needed, we could extend and then extend and extend then get to there eventually. Or maybe supplement with some town money and get to there, that sort of a thing, just so it allowed us flexibility in terms of the application of the funds and.
We're trying to be creative to give up, give folks opportunities to not have to build sidewalks that lead nowhere. That's all it is.
Correct.
In pri- in primary arteries though, it might be nice even if it doesn't lead anywhere, because there's, Kent, like Williston did a lot of that piecemeal work. And now they're filling it all in and they have such a nice network.
I'd say the piecemeal work, although it's annoying for some period of years, probably a decade or so, once you start filling them in. It sort of comes together more smoothly, but the the thing I don't wanna have happen with the piecemeal thing is Handy's that's just nowhere. It's just, yeah, it's on their backyard and they have it on the street, but it's just nowhere. And it's it's never gonna really connect with anything.
Someday maybe it'll go somewhere, but I don't know.
Whereas, you know, if they'd been more reasonable in the Act two fifty reign, it would've been on the other side of the road and gone somewhere.
Right.
Yeah.
But we needed to develop our own backbone with supporting documents and guidance documents to be able to say, this is what the town wants to see happen. I think Act two fifty will begin to respect the town's position.
Well, I think now if you've got different staff, it'll do that one anyway.
I never had a problem with that.
Okay.
Well.
But anyway, so let's, okay. So we are to the point now where the staff is going to take these comments that we've given and draft an ordinance. The planning commission will review it first. I think after that, it might be a worthwhile use of time to allow the DRB to skim it and provide any comments. Because at the end of the day, they're the ones implementing and we may have missed something collectively, they might catch or recommend. And then after that, I think we take this new amended draft to the select board and go from there.
Like does a uh, a V trans approved engineering study, what kind of monkey wrench does that throw into a project? Pretty significant, right?
Given that they're gonna pay for eighty percent, seventy-five or eighty percent of it, it is, it slows it down by several years. But in terms of paying for it, it's it's annoying, but they're paying for most of it.
So Brett, I mean, what what I'm thinking right now, and we can go deeper in our meetings, but. Uh, would be to essentially separate out the V trans projects from our municipal projects.
I say. Yeah.
And I know when we said we're gonna do a plan, but essentially we'd be doing two plans. One that is with V trans, V trans funding as available, and the other one would be the stuff that would be more like the town. Uh, I don't know if that's where we'll wind up, if that's.
Why does Lake Road not require a V trans?
Lake Road, uh.
De- Debrun.
Ninety-six, I mean?
Yeah, right.
Because that's just, that already has wide enough, sufficiently wide enough shoulders for the bike weight part of that. But we don't have sidewalks out there. V trans does not do, does not really give a damn or care about sidewalks, we, it would be up to us. It would be in there right away, we'd have to ask for a construction permit, but other than that, they still don't give a damn. Where you could, you could put hundreds of miles of sidewalks on their state highways. As long as it's not inflicting some additional work or cost to them, just don't care.
Fair enough. You think that would be their mentality with that? I mean, what, it's all public.
Why don't you talk to their twelve, twelve staff members and and comply with their rules, it's more expensive.
More like, I don't.
Yeah, more always, obviously.
So, okay, so we're gonna.
But if, but to Bren's point, if we worked on all the local roads and particularly a lot of them are coming up to one oh four.
Yeah.
The more that attaches to one oh four puts more pressure on the state to fund that. And we've got the hospital behind us also for that trail.
Yep.
So let's uh, let's get that ordinance drafted, let's set a target to have that in the board's hands by maybe the first or second meeting in June. Think that's reasonable?
Uh, what what board?
It's up to them.
The, the planning commission, do you think?
I don't know until we start drafting it that I'd like a deadline, I mean, we can put one on there if you'd like. But I'm thinking the PCS to review it, then the DRB, then regional planning, and then the select board, so.
I'm thinking that having a draft in place for them sometime in June would be nice.
Okay.
I mean, I'd really like to see it back in the select board's hand no later than September.
Some of these things are out of our control, so.
Well, I understand that, but a lot of them.
We could start that, we can start putting those, putting timelines on it.
Well, yeah, I just, that way we track it and, you know, certain things get lost in the shuffle and certain, but this is important. So as long as we all, and then target dates and they, and they help people keep boards on the same page. You know, we know what's coming, when it's coming. You know.
I I think we need to prioritize the capital program first. Because that's an ongoing need that needs to be updated and done. And then stormwater is something that needs to get from the back.
Well, how long would it take you to review a draft ordinance is my, is that a full meeting?
Supposedly, we have to actually write.
We have to make the draft right first.
Make it.
It's gotta go in layers, come back to a.
Well, I thought the staff is gonna get through the drafting process and have an an actual document for the PC to review. And if that takes longer.
It's gonna go through the layers first.
Well, that's fine.
Sure.
And if it's gonna take an extra two months for that, then let's add that in.
So let's go, let's go through the actions that we've taken so far tonight and then we'll figure out where that review fits in. And it may be June, it may be later, but.
Well, it doesn't have to be, but.
But anyway, I'm back to, so stormwater, uh, two, um, consultants, then capital. Uh, finish up both of those, um, when when possible. Um, and then we would probably move on to, um, sidewalks after that. So I'm thinking that we have at least three, maybe up to six months worth of work cut out for us between stormwater and capital. Um, now, I'm sure that if we wanted to take half a meeting and cover a draft stormwater ordinance somewhere in there, we absolutely could. Um, I wouldn't wanna do it within the first, say, certainly not during May, probably not even the first meeting in June.
That's fine.
Um, so at the end of June timeframe, I think can work for us.
Call it July if you need to, I mean, that's fine.
Somewhere in that timeframe.
I just.
Uh, makes sense if if we're gonna get through the rest of it.
Right.
Um, without getting, without getting distracted. And then somewhere in there also, I think I committed to some recommendations for citing the town hall.
Right.
Um, and then, um, Jack is going to go to the solar, um, the media of solar.
Okay, okay.
And so we'll be, we'll bring that back and we'll be discussing that also. So we've got a few sort of odds and ends that we're gonna have to incorporate into our bigger projects, um.
Okay, so let's.
Right. And some of those are sort of urgent. This one is, it's urgent, but it's not probably quite, quite on the same level as some of the other stuff.
Okay, well, I, I think that's a good working plan.
Okay.
And we're all on the same page. So that's an immediate improvement in itself. So let's, let's move on to maybe the focal point of the evening where we're actually going to lay out maybe five. Call it five, just for the start, and we'll see where we end up, of our top priorities for the town for this upcoming year. That was incredibly effective for us last year.
You mean construction budgets?
Because we had one. Right.
Hi, Bruce.
So.
Probably the construction of the two-town garage, I mean, that's.
That's off the list.
That's off the list, even off, you haven't started to do it. I mean, that's gonna be a big priority.
It is, it is a big priority and it takes a lot of our time actually right now, um, but yes, it's, it's not on the to-do list anymore, it's the already doing list.
Well, that's a to-do list, the doing list.
Yeah, yeah, because.
Maybe we factor that in when we lay out our priorities.
Correct.
Staff time is not as abundant as it was this time last year.
So can I ask a question? If we selected Congress Street sidewalk, could we also hire a consultant to do the whole advanced project, could we?
I.
Where they serve.
I.
Take it off your shoulders, you've got some accountability, and we get it done.
Let's give uh.
Well, we're not getting it done, because.
Let's, let's get back, let's give, let's give Bruce up to speed as to where we are, that way we're all on the same page.
Well, first of all, I apologize for being late, but I had a meeting at work that I had to attend.
Well, glad you're here. We uh, we went through and laid out some priorities for the next three to six months for the planning commission to work on. That's going to include our five-year capital program for equipment replacement. Um, they're gonna get with a consultant and use that, that already budgeted consulting money for stormwater to do a cost benefit analysis on a stormwater utility. So we get some answers there. They are going to, our staff, they're gonna start drafting a sidewalk ordinance, which will go through a legal review. And then we're gonna go to a planning commission review, and the DRB take a look at it after that, because they'll be implementing it. Um, we'll have regional take a quick glance at it to make sure there are no conflicts with their rules. And then it'll come to the select board and we'll, we can amend it or approve it. And then.
What are we looking at for a timeframe on all this?
Uh, we're looking at, I would say, you know, grants, you wanna get that?
Yeah, I can run that through again. Um, so the, the sort of high priority stuff that we talked about, meaning the stormwater and the capital. We're thinking that that'll be over the next three to six months with some of these other things sort of peppered in throughout that timeframe. Uh, the, what was the last one we just talked about, uh, sidewalk, uh, work would be June, July timeframe.
Just with the sidewalk ordinance.
Police and ordinance, and then the uh, the financial planning around it, maybe so, maybe a little bit later.
Yeah. And then we're also going to ask them to give us a short list of. Requirements they'd like to see as we look at a new town hall. And we've kind of reached a consensus that the best way forward is to relocate instead of rebuild here. So they're gonna give us a short list, you know, they could look at public transportation needs, you know, the whole shebang and give us a, you know, some guidance. To figure in while we look at different opportunities to move. So other than that, we're just getting to the point now where we're ready to prioritize, like we did last year. Naming, you know, targets one, two, three, four, five, uh, the fun part, so we're glad you're here for that. Um, I guess to give us a format, um, if anybody would like to start by giving. You know, I'll start by saying I think town hall should be our number one priority above all else. Um, that's a suggestion, it's not a be all and all, it's up for discussion, it's why we're all here. I think number two, because of what it could mean to the area, would be the start of the St. Albans Health Path. I think number two, because of what it could mean to the area, would be the start of the St. Albans Health Path, and.
Which, which health path? Which one are we talking about?
The one on the Sash.
Great. Okay, I agree.
And, uh. And then the crossover and, you know, so there's a lot of, there's a pretty defined scope for that, but making it priority number two. I mean, we're working with a consultant right now to help us receive more grant money to help implement that, so. We're already working to that end, but it kind of cauterizes the fact that this is what we want. Um. I guess it's a priority that we need to factor in is the fact that we don't have as much staff time available that we did last year because we're building the DPW now, and a lot of time gets tied up with that construction process.
Well, but most of that's subbed out though, so I don't really understand how that comes into big play. I mean, you have, you have a, you have a owner's rep and you have a contractor, so how much more time does it take from these people to, uh, to do that?
There's some, there's some oversights, and there's still some ins and outs.
And the reason why we hired people like that is so it wouldn't eat up their time.
Right, but there's, I mean, there's keeping track and doing infrastructure fund warrants and different tasks that aren't normally on their to-do list that we have to factor in when we lay out a, a list of priorities. I mean, does anybody have any ideas to add to the list?
I do.
What were?
Well, go ahead.
Uh, what were last year's top five priorities?
The same as the year before.
Okay.
DPW, relocating DPW was number one, um, relocating town hall was maybe two? No, the Health Path was two, I think, the Thorpe Avenue, Thorpe Avenue extension, um, town hall was third.
And then we, you know, everything else other than that was, you know.
So you managed to get one of the projects, yeah.
Hey, that's an accomplishment. That's better than none.
So when you're, when you're setting goals, the goals have to be realistic.
Right.
You have to set dates for the goals, or the goals are just goals and they never have an end date.
Right.
And the third one that I'd like to see, and I think it's an achievable goal, and, uh, I think it would benefit the town a lot, is the dock. Turning the dock into, into a pier, per se. Instead of a dock, I mean, to me, that's an achievable goal, and that's something that can be enjoyed by the residents of this town, and doesn't.
Are we talking, now you, are you saying, like, we had an engineering analysis done on raising it versus?
No, absolutely.
Are you saying, like, let's go and let's beautify it, let's make it usable, let's get, okay, yeah, I think that's.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, let's just make it usable and enjoyable for the people in this town without having to spend ten million dollars to make it two feet higher.
Right.
I mean, leave it the way it is, fix it up, so the water level goes down, people can go out there and enjoy themselves. That's an achievable goal, in my opinion.
How does everybody else feel? That's right in mind.
I haven't seen, you know, is there a plan for what's gonna happen there, or?
So the blue star, so Alan, I don't know if you'd like to explain what we were working on.
Sure.
I'd actually brought it up at the Parks and Rights meeting, that I wanted to beautify the dock. It is a place where people go.
Could you, I, I don't think you can, we can hear you as well if you could just come up here.
Yeah, come up.
I'm sorry, stand over there.
Look, I've tried to listen to meetings before, and it's hard to hear you, or even hear your head, yeah.
But we made your spot right here.
Thank you.
Um, just something very simple. I had suggested, you know, there's a couple washouts, filling them in, getting them patched in. I've looked into like, um, green traffic paint, just kind of giving a quick coat of paint, kind of makes it look like grass. Putting out some planters, flowers, some benches, calling it like a cement type of bench, just so. Um, little hoodlums don't pick them up, throw them in the lake, but just, um, simple little stuff. Because the fire department still has to test their pumps out there, so I still need availability to get the fire trucks out there to test their pumps. But just beautify it a little bit, just some flowers, planters.
So maybe a, a safety railing?
Um, it's kind of courtyard type, of the L shape of it.
Uh-huh.
That'd be more where people can just relax, watch the sun go down, they can fish, there'd be benches. Leaving the straight part pretty much open, just for the simple reason we gotta get the fire trucks down in there. But it's at a low cost, um, I know Jessica was working on trying to get a grant, you know, to take care of a lot of the costs of it. It's work that the public works crew can do.
What about lighting, Alan? We could put some lights up, maybe, no? I don't think so, because it's.
With flooding and that, you don't wanna put any conduit or anything like that. But we do have poles there. It might be a case where Green Mountain Power gives us a different street light that shines out that way, I mean, which is doable.
Yeah, you put solar lights up, you don't have to worry about that.
We can, um.
And write your planners.
And boy, they, they'd work great out there, wide open.
But.
I also talked to the St. Albans Arts Council about possibly putting up one of those art walls. I don't know if you've driven through Swanton and you've seen them along there. They're putting one in Hilton Park to try it out, and if it goes well, they might consider the bay too.
That'd be neat.
Actually, Jessica brought that up at the Parks and Rights, uh, meeting. It's a great idea. Um, if you look on the south side of the dock, we have that apartment building that's fairly close and is old stone dock. There's one section there that if you did a wall, it gives him a little bit of privacy, because it isn't gonna be a real tall wall. But it also would beautify and kind of height that a little bit, but give a little bit of a good look. The only difference I have on the art wall is I didn't realize that people can just come in and paint over it. I thought it'd be more like an artist paints something, it's there for at least two or three weeks, because I didn't like the idea of someone coming in after someone just painted nice and. Doing another scene, but I heard that.
Yeah.
Well, we could.
Graffiti is not what you're looking for.
Yeah, there's some rules around it. They don't have words.
Well, we could, if we wanted to, we could do our own, if you, if, if we wanted to.
But it's very cheap anyway, so.
Yeah, it's our, but that's.
It is, I think it's, I think it's something that we could, you know, sink our teeth into and get done and, and, you know, have something to show for it.
I'm just looking at the fact that Creep's can knows really well down in the bay, with their walking path in the park, when the water's down and it's clean, you know, there's a lot of traction with people in the park, so. Everybody remembers the pier as the Ticonderoga coming in with the trolley cars going down, at least if you read the history books, but, um, you know, it's a part of history and it's part of the bay, so I'd love to see it cleaned up and people using it.
So how do people feel about making that?
It's a great idea.
So do we wanna make it priority three and call the Health Path two and the Town Hall one and just decide that that's the top three, or are we not set on that yet?
Let me just say that I think the town hall's gonna require a heck of a lot of work and effort, and we've got the current construction going on with the town hall. I don't wanna get it so overloaded that we miss something in terms of the major construction projects. So I, I think we can start working on the town hall, but I don't see the efforts that we're putting, like finding a place to put it,
Hmm.
would be for me a goal for this coming year. But beyond that, I think we could wait to the following year to elevate to another task. Uh, and by that time, the garage will be finished, so we have more time with people. Uh, the, the fixing of the, the pier, I think, is relatively easy in terms of time and money. That's my two cents. I just, I don't want us to get so overloaded, we can't get anything done, because we're just stuck.
I think we have enough time to get a good consensus from the people of the town as to what they'd wanna see too, you know, in a town hall.
Yeah.
Location is very important.
Yeah.
Very important.
Right.
I mean, we can build a town hall, we can build a building, but locating it in the right location is very important.
And to me, that is a year-long project.
It is, that's a very long project, yeah.
Well, I think that, I think we need to.
I agree, we got enough time to do and do it right.
Well, we, we have about a year's worth of work from the infrastructure committee. They already identified like twenty-two different locations in town and prioritize and rank them, and I think that we need to maybe spend some time as a board reviewing that work and seeing where that's at, because maybe that work in a nutshell is largely already been done, and we either need to pick it up and look in a similar area if that exact lot is off the, off the market. You know, I just, I think we need.
We're gonna have to get some more, I agree with you, but we're gonna have to get some more information on what has changed in the real estate markets. What properties come off the list, what properties been added to the list.
Didn't you also use a process of elimination with those twenty-two locations?
Well, in the original, when we were doing that originally, we started out with the town hall and the DPW being together, so we needed a larger, right, lot.
Lot of work.
Right.
Now that that's not necessary, we don't need as big a, big an area.
Yes.
And Brent, and the other thing is too, is we could look at is, you know, you could, you could look for a better piece of land if it was more suitable. You know, you didn't have to put so much money into it to get going to build it. I mean, look for, look for property where there's infrastructure and where there's services that, that's important.
Oh, yeah.
We can even buy it.
Natural gas, water, sewer, and there's a lot of those out there.
We can buy a building that's already standing too and make it what we wanna.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think anything should be.
I, I don't know. This is our one shot at it, and I think we should build what we, what town wants.
I think something that's, that brings pride to the town, people would be proud about, for it.
Absolutely. And they probably won't do it for another hundred years, right, again, hopefully.
That's right. We could inter our ashes there.
That's okay.
I'm gonna circle that back.
Sounds like you're all by yourselves there, huh?
So what I'm seeing, and I'm not sure that it's really planning commission place to step in and try to prioritize or even add to this list, but what I see on this list for what it's worth is essentially three projects that is probably all you guys have time for anyway.
Right.
So to try to prioritize the top five, maybe, I don't know, um, I think three's probably good. But when I look at these three, three projects, they don't seem to be competing a whole lot for resources. Um, you know, you probably don't even have to rank order them. They're three very fundamentally different programs, right? One of them is something that you're simply gonna defer to Parks and Rec and Public Works, and then, you know, the, the, the Health Path is something that, um, you just really need to start making progress on, and the Town Hall is something that's really planning, so.
Right.
You know, it might just be enough to leave at that.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe try to set some, try to set some dates on each one, but.
Well, I think, if we're asking you to come up with a financial plan for sidewalks, I think that belongs on the list?
Mm-hmm. Sure, so we have, you know, we have our marching orders, um, you know, from what we talked about in the first half of the meeting.
Right.
And I don't see anything on this list affecting that, this year.
Right, I'm just saying, maybe that belongs on the list so that the select board gets it back. I, you know, to be honest with you, and I don't know if this is pie in this guy thinking, I'd like to see a plan of some kind with funding designated on the ballot in either, in one of the two elections next year. And then I'd like to see some implementation in twenty twenty-one. Or depending on whether or not we could get it done in March, you know, maybe even twenty twenty.
For what project are you talking?
So we're talking about taking.
On this to, heard it.
Well, we're talking about taking the fourteen different, you know.
So putting some financial planning behind the, the sidewalk planning that we gave you, said this is what we want to do.
Yeah, yeah.
We didn't give you anything, any indication of how it will get done or how it will get paid for.
Well, the cost goes along with achievable goals. Okay, it's very important. And, uh, I think as far as sidewalks and health paths, you know, we've jumped all over the city and all over the town, been like a rabbit, here, here, here and there. I think there's one that, that everybody essentially agrees on that would be good for us, and that's one going up the ramp, going over Hardak. A lot of people will use that. That's the one that I'd like to see a shoot for. And financially, we've done, we've done, uh, cost analysis on that, and that, that's all over the chart. I mean, we've gotten.
Are you talking Congress Street?
Pardon me, I'm talking Exit Nineteen, sorry, down the ramp. I mean, we've talked, we've got prices of three million dollars. Uh, we've got, I, I just think that. So what, I think I agree with Grant, right?
Yeah.
Is that we keep the list short, keep it achievable, and go after that list. We made, we've made five, ten, five or ten, we put five or ten items on the list and it just confuses stuff. We don't have to have the dock on the list because it's kind of like a project, but if it doesn't go on the list, it won't get done, in my opinion.
Along those lines, I was also wondering about the town forest and the forest road access.
Sure, yeah.
That should be a priority so people can get up there in the winter.
Yeah.
And it, it should be being built by the end of the year, so maybe that should be on our project list, just to make sure we're seeing it through.
Mm-hmm. Well, maybe we, uh, we need a further legal review of our right of way.
Okay.
And I think, yeah, and I think that right now, with a quorum of the select board here, I think we can ask the manager to please get that review started, to figure out exactly what we have, where it was given to us, and figure out what our rights are.
No, for the sand?
No, for the access.
No.
Forest Drive?
Forest Drive.
Oh.
Because we don't know what our right of way width is, let's say. We've, we've gotta see where that was given to us. Where is that easement? What is it? What can we do with it? Because right now we have a class four road that's like, what, fourteen feet? Something like that?
See, here we go, we jump around again.
So what are the, so maybe, so before you can add that for a project, you might need to figure out prerequisites are to add it as a project.
Wow.
Right, and I think that's what Brandon's saying, right?
Yeah. So let's just get the legal review done, figure out what exactly is that we can do, and then go from there. Like, that's, if we don't know what our options are, how are we ever gonna make a decision? So I still like the, but back to the sidewalks real quick, Bruce. We were talking about having the planning commission identify, you know, a few projects over a span of maybe five or ten years, and identifying a funding source, whether it be the local option tax revenue, revenue or tax revenue, and have the select board, you know, either tweak that recommendation or accept it, and then put it before the voters sometime, hopefully next year, for approval for all of these projects with all of the funding sources, with a, a cost amount not to exceed X. And then let's get, you know, however many projects we think we can reasonably build in that amount of time approved, funded, and then build them over time without having to go back every year. So we stop this cycle of, you know, identify a project, plan it, get it approved, build it, and then starting over. Let's do the process and encompass more than one project because it's within the same realm of construction.
And I would add to that, to your point about the project that is up the Sash and across 104, those projects, even, even probably the ones on, on Route Seven, North and South, those are somehow fundamentally different than the ones that are municipal roads, right? And so I think we'll treat them separately, and we'll probably basically be giving two plans, right?
I agree.
One for one that can be done as, as possible with whatever granting, grant and state, um, funds are available, and that would be like those Sash and 104 type projects, and another one that's more just town projects.
Right. And I think, I think it'd be palatable to our voters if we were able to say that we're going to use local option tax revenue to pay for our, our local projects.
Getting back to the statement that you made earlier about, you know, you didn't know if it was your place, of course it is, you know, you're a taxpayer in this town. And, uh, I'd like to see more, I'd see, I'd like to see the, the, the select board working closer with the other entities in this town then, and get more involved in these projects.
Here we are.
Getting, getting things done. So you're, yes, you're in the council.
So we will recommend, I'm not gonna.
Yeah, no, so we're, I think we've duly given them a full plate of food, and have fun eating it, and if you need some coffee, let's ask.
But don't choke on it.
Well, it's, it's an end that has to support it, so.
Yes, you said in the announcement, yeah, too.
Has, uh.
Seen some hard swallows throughout the course of the night, and.
Yeah.
It's been a tough year.
So we've got right now for a project list, a short list of projects that we wanna obtain, we've got finding where town hall could be, and we'll rank that one, let's say. The St. Albans Health Path, because it's not a localized project on a municipal road that we could just fund and do, we need V-Trans cooperation and some grants.
Sure.
And make that an equal, because I think, you know, we said earlier, the St. Albans Health Path, if we get it to connect to all these different points, could be an economic driver for the area.
Oh, there's no doubt, yeah.
So that's a major priority for the town. And then I think it's worthwhile to just put the dock right on the project list. And then I think it's important to recognize the fact that the, that the manager and the DPW director are already doing a great deal of work for the Stone House, and that that was one of our projects that we identified as a priority last year, and it is receiving attention. But because that's already underway and we've kind of eaten up what we are able to do this year, we'll focus on developing scopes for other projects and then maybe come back to it when we're ready to take the next step. You know, hopefully, I don't know when that grant was announced that you applied for, but, you know, maybe that, there's still some hope there, but.
Which grant is that, Al?
The one for thirty-something thousand.
We asked for some money to put, upgrade the electrical and.
Oh, in the Stone House?
And, uh, do some farmer's market upgrades, but I don't think.
And I think maybe in the midsummer, if we get to the point where the doors and windows are back in and, you know, we have a recommendation from staff to spend twenty thousand on electrical and lighting upgrades, I think that's something that's not worthy of being on this shortlist, but it's something that should be on everybody's radar, because that building is a gem. Um, so if everybody feels comfortable with that, that's the way I'd like to approach it. Just an ongoing project that we'll focus on is needed.
You know, I, I don't think, you know, financially, I don't know why we're waiting on a grant to do that work, I mean, we got the money, why would we wait on a grant? Okay, really?
Well, we were already waiting on
I mean, it's nice to get free money, there's no doubt about that.
Well, we just got twenty thousand worth of free money and that work being underway with the doors and the windows out.
Some of the money that was already set aside for the Stone House is what we're using for the windows and doors that are being done right now. Jen and myself had gotten a twenty thousand dollar grant through the, um, Historical Society of Vermont. So that will go on to help rebuild some of the doors and probably work on the cupola of the roof. So I think the only thing at the last select board meeting, Brennan wanted me to work on going on the electrical and stuff like that, and I just kind of slowed him down a little bit, just for the simple reason I've got so much going on right now with the garage and everything that I'd much rather get a few of these projects tied up before going on.
Well, the other thing is, the other thing is too, is you gotta get that place watertight, okay? You gotta get it tight before we start thinking about doing interior work. Let's get the roof stopped, let's get the windows in, let's get the doors swinging.
Yeah.
And that's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, I agree.
Ongoing, ongoing.
Watertight.
We're paying attention.
Before the electrical.
It's ongoing, we're paying attention to it, if you feel like you're ready to take on the next phase, let us know and we'll go from there.
Wintertime could be a good time to start planning.
Exactly.
But, yeah.
You gotta realize that all the activities that I've been doing in the park, the hot rod show, the music festival, the farmer's market, all those proceeds are going into the Stone House renovation. So.
Well, then every, all the proceeds of
So I mean, there is some money that I'm trying to bring in that goes to that, so.
Well, I've been keep, keeping a tight eye on that because I donated some money last year, and I want to see that it's well spent. Remember the raffle money?
Oh, yeah.
My forty bucks.
No, well, you know, you buy the, the memorial and community gift policy that the, that the Parks Committee and the Select Board helped pass last year.
You already spent that.
All the proceeds off of those gifts go into that same budget.
You know, there's something to do on that, on the dock, if we do the, at the pier, we could put some memorial, um, benches on that.
I'd be a little afraid of that with the ice shoving and if like
Really?
Right.
Yeah, they're, um, very delicate benches.
They're granite ones.
Oh, that's right, because for each
The footings that I'm putting in for them to sit on are pretty thick, they're pinned down. I mean, people spend a lot of money for that memorial, I'd just hate to see it get crushed with ice or whatever, with the freezing as well.
It's not something you're planning to remove then, it's not something you're planning to take off?
No, they're pinned in place, an epoxy pin, and so, I mean, we have two
No, but he's saying, are the ones you plan on putting on the dock were removable or no?
Yes, the ones, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And just those prefabs, the legs, and then you use two-by-fours or whatever.
I'm kind of excited about that because I just, a lot of people have, uh, have mentioned it, how nice it would be. I'd just like to see something mature.
So we're, we're in agreement on that shortlist, does anybody have anything they'd like to add or mention? I know we've fully loaded the planning commission with work.
I just, I don't have a project, I just want to say thank you guys all for your time, and I think we hope to have this kind of meeting every year. So as you go through the year, if you think of something, email it to, to myself or Ned, and we can start building next year's list. It doesn't have to be huge and you don't have to wait until, um, spring next year.
Yeah.
We can dream about half your time in January.
Lines of communication.
No, and hopefully you're looking at a new list.
Yeah, correct, that too, right, but
Well, just consider the lines of communication that thoroughly open.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Whatever you need, whatever you recommend, just make it known and vice versa, 'cause it will be go two ways.
A couple Can I say something?
Go ahead.
There's been a lot of talk about sidewalks and health paths. So, I've sat in on two of the meetings about the Route Seven North. I've sat near Jim Coda, you know, I always have this ongoing joke, who's gonna maintain them? When you're planning these projects, you got a certain cost of maintenance. With the heaving in Vermont, there's always gonna be a slab that needs to be cut out or redone. You gotta think about who's gonna maintain them and whatever. Don't make the same mistake the city's doing in putting four-foot wide sidewalks. You gotta go at least five foot wide if you're doing a concrete sidewalk or no piece of equipment is gonna sit on it. You're gonna be driving on the edges and breaking it. And if you're doing your health pass, we gotta be at least eight or ten foot wide pave, so we can put a truck on it to plow it. But with all of that being said, in our ordinance for sidewalks, are the homeowners or the businesses responsible to keep these sidewalks clean? Or is it gonna be the responsibility of the town? Because then it's staffing and more equipment. So when we get into the nitty-gritty of it and come down to the cost, we gotta be thinking about that.
I think that's gonna evolve over time.
No, no, I agree with you, we should have that debate now.
Exactly.
Well, we've already, actually Ned and I were already talking about it today, and Willston, if anyone gets a chance, has a really good, um, operations and maintenance plan, even prioritization, they might have twice as many miles of sidewalk than they maintain in the winter. They, they do the arteries first and it's, there's a whole, um, bullet list of explanation for them, how they, our maintenance plan
Are the homeowners responsible for the sidewalk in front of their home?
I don't believe so, I think they're basically, the town is, takes over some of the public sidewalks and then they, they have a map of the streets that they, they work on, and if you would like your street to be added to that list, you can approach the select board and ask it to be, um, added to a maintenance list.
The city does though, I think the city City, I think does plow their own, their sidewalks.
The city does their own sidewalks.
Yep.
Colchester did also does all sidewalks as public, right? I just, I don't, I'm not hard on, you know, having the homeowners do their own because look at, you know, Most of us are old. elderly people.
The consistency is impossible.
Right.
As we built them out, you know, maintenance.
But
You're looking at a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand for a sidewalk machine before you put a plow or snow blower or a proponent. So for one machine, it's a quarter of a million dollars at least. These machines aren't made, they have high gear, they're not made to drive from the bay to the north end, from the north end to the south end, you guys gotta remember that we are all the way around the city and even though we're trying to connect this city, you gotta move this piece of equipment. It's a very slow process, and then you gotta have an operator to do it.
I don't think that the doors are firmly closed on us.
We should.
Haven't I heard that the city would be
Amenable to maintain
Amenable to possibly plowing anything that connected to their system for a fee or?
You have heard that, I have heard that, but we have not worked out
I've heard that, I've, I've had conversations with Dominic Cloud where he said he would.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's gonna come up at their
You ever go put your eggs in the basket?
Why would I guess?
So
Well, I think it's gonna
I think you gotta have the best plan from a health point of view.
I didn't say it's taken at their bank, I said I heard it.
We will address maintenance in our ordinance and we actually already started.
Yes.
Well, it's just like anything else, you know, the buildings that we're building and stuff, we, you know. Yeah, building a building and putting in a sidewalk is just the beginning, you have to maintain it after, you know? There's preventive maintenance that has to be done, not only to the sidewalk, but the equipment and the buildings, if you want to get the longevity out of your investment.
Well, let's, um.